Are we wearing masks again when we back to doing?
I figured I was far enough away until I wasn't doing it.
I'm far enough away.
Alright, if no one's gonna wear a mask, I'm not gonna wear it. Oh, you gave. Just me. Now you guys know who it is. The elaborate ruses up.
It doesn't match the dress. It doesn't.
You should know.
This girl's a more sequin.
Do you have a mask that that just did?
No, I said it doesn't match.
I do, I just brought the wrong one. Well, I guess here we are, 5:30. We have a quorum. And it looks like Lauren is here. Lauren, I think that's, yes, I see you now. So we have a quorum. In fact, we're a full house. The first order of business, we set the minutes of the February 3 regular meeting. Moved by Shay. By Phil, is there any discussion? You're in none. All in favor?
Hi.
Well, we'll call, we're back to, since Lauren is on the call, I'll do a roll call.
Can you check and make sure she can hear? Because we can move that.
Lauren, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you.
Great. Alright, so this is, again, we're gonna go back to the motion for approving the minutes and do a roll call. Shay.
Hi.
Lauren.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
I also would, I. Minutes are approved. Next order of business is visitors, comments, and petitions. There are a few people on the call. Paige is here. Yeah, how's it going? We read, Carrie's here. Is there anybody who has a visitor's comment or petition? Or none. Next order of business is the ferry service update. There's nothing new since the last meeting, although if there's anything anybody wants to talk about while we're on that item, we can. You're in none. I don't know off the top of my head on the summer schedule.
Did coincide with daylight savings?
I don't think so.
So you're hoping? Well, it makes sense, but.
Well, it's not gonna happen.
The schedule.
Alright.
We only use it once a week. Jeez. And you, while we're mentioning the ferry, though, if I could, you, somebody wanted to have a discussion on the schedule or the trips, you know, some point in the future, didn't you say?
Yes.
Workshop or?
I think we want to make a recommendation. We talked about this a couple of meetings ago about potentially soliciting input from truck drivers and others who are feeling the squeeze of the ferry, especially ladies. Talk about what we might recommend to the ferry service. And it sounded like Mark Higgins is, is open to having a discussion about changing the schedules Islesboro, for Islesboro. And so I think we've asked for some additional data from the ferry service about ridership. And asked that they start keeping some additional data about cars left behind to have a better idea. And it's, it's hard because the different islands do the lineup in such different ways that it's hard to compare one route to another and even necessarily know if you have more people left behind that would use the service. I mean, I know that if I show up and I'm not gonna make the ferry, a lot of times, depending on what it is, I might just turn around and leave. You know, I'm not gonna wait, but. So it's, some of those things are hard to quantify, but we're trying to get some more information from the ferry service and make a recommendation to the ferry service for how we might want the schedule to be in the future.
Okay, and I have not heard back from Mark Higgins. Shay had asked me about him coming out here. I kinda left it to him to give us a couple of dates or regarde for him that I would work them through us, so I'll, I'll check with him again.
It makes sense to, to poke him again. My experience, it might take a couple of follow-ups to.
Would now be a good time to talk about a suggestion that was made from the community in regards to scheduling, or should we wait?
That was great time.
Um, in talking to a couple of different people, one of the things that they're kicking around was would it be possible for us to have a dedicated contractor boat? Run. And then the following run would just be for the passenger cars and people and stuff like that, the way the dump trucks and the additional commercial type of vehicles didn't bump off.
But when you say dedicated, you, you mean in addition to the normal schedule, you run a special boat that's so for the contractors, you're gonna have the sides of the boat must be empty, right? And I assume we wanna allow passenger cars to go on that boat?
Right, and so we're, I, and I'm not sure exactly how a lot of it would look going through, but if they had an earlier run that they could get four or five of the dump trucks through.
It certainly works better if we add an earlier run in the morning, right? Because in the morning on mainland side, there's a lot of cars and a lot of extra traffic. So one thing we might consider is, I don't think my understanding of the 12-hour rule for the Coast Guard is that we are not up against it in terms of, we could have an earlier boat or a later boat. I, I don't know what that does for emergency. Emergency runs for the ferry, and right now they're often taking the morning boat off if they do a late night run, which yeah, I'm not clear that that's required, but I'm also not sure it's a bad idea. If they are not, had not slept, then they probably oughta get some sleep. Very too, so. But there is some room for that, I think, in discussion to say, maybe we wanna ask for a boat that leaves Lincolnville like at 7 o'clock in the morning and have that be a priority. It doesn't have to be priority, it could be anybody at that point, but it could be priority two for contractors and say that's when you go, and if you don't make that boat.
And you go back to your reservation system and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, you, you're not gonna make the, the eight because that's gonna be primarily for passengers. I mean, you might make it because if there's not enough passenger cars to fill up that ferry, then there's gonna be room for you, but you're just sort of, you know, not the priority. So that's, that's something we could talk about, and maybe when Mark shows up, we might try to have something concrete.
How many trucks can you get on that?
Well, you're talking about down the center line?
Yeah.
It's just a length.
Yeah.
Long.
So. I don't know, does anybody? Melissa, you, you sound like you've done some research on this. Do you wanna take a stab at like a draft for the select board to consider and maybe make some changes and say like here's what we think we might want to ask for the ferry?
Yeah, I can do it.
Just in regards to this part, right?
Yeah.
Not all.
Yeah, you, you can do everything too. I mean, they oughta be two separate documents. Anything else? Ferry service related. You're in none. Onto sea level rise. Shay, I know you just had a meeting.
Mm-hmm. Well, the only thing that just to bridge the two is related to sea level rise, there has been a separate effort from Nathan Parker at Maine D E P to help connect, to have a meeting with members of D O T to talk about sea level rise issues related to Grendel Point. I know that Mark Higgins, he wanted to have it both meetings, and I don't know if Dave Bernhardt was included in both meetings as well, but just as you're scheduling that, I feel like if he was able to be here in person and, you know, we could kind of be on site and, or either before or after we had that discussion, we could certainly zoom other people in, but it would be possible to schedule it so that we could have designated time to talk maybe both ferry schedule issues and then also to have some infrastructure conversations. I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, it seems like it's it's gonna be hard to get him out here multiple times, and we might.
Let's, he's got him here, let's get him.
Yeah.
What's Mr. Parker's first name again?
Nathan.
Nathan Parker.
Yes, it's very Nathan Parker.
I thought I heard Parker, but.
Well, there's a Parker Gansit.
Oh.
And so I, but I do feel, I'm now questioning myself, but I feel like it is Nathan Parker. I'll have to look at my notes. But I'll connect you via email.
Make sure he gets invited either for Zoom or in person?
Yeah, Zoom, I think is fine. Everybody else besides who I mean, everybody's welcome to come out in person if they wanted to, but I, it, it had been described initially as just kind of a Zoom conversation just to start the conversation. To let them know that we would like to have a, a joint planning process. So. Yep, and other sea level rise stuff, we had a meeting at 4 o'clock today, just before this meeting. It was really good. We're moving on. We talked about, we hope to apply with the Lighthouse Restoration folks for a shared island fellow. You'll hear more about when we start talking budget stuff. But it would be nice to have additional capacity for planning processes and communication and all kinds of fun things. We also Janet and Peter Wilcox and myself had a meeting with C E, formerly C H, I'm just gonna continue to call it C E S because it's way easier than whoever they are now.
Daily board?
Yep. The, the folks who proposed a solution at the Narrows and they're gonna be coming back to us with another proposal, but basically the discussion there centered around, they created a recommendation for raising the Narrows Road up two feet and gave us an estimated cost for doing that. And all of that was done before we had any kind of community process really about what we should be planning for. It seems as though we are inclined to want to plan for more than two feet of sea level rise, but they're gonna, we're hoping that what they can do is come to us with a proposal that has a couple of different scenarios so that we can understand really how the price jumps when you're looking at planning for different sea level rise. You know, one feet versus four feet versus eight feet, how the costs change, and also how solutions may change as well. And are, are, you know, when, what are those kind of cost break things? So that, we're probably gonna hear from them sometime in March with the proposal for what that proposal would look like, but there's a conversation happening with D O T and we talked budget stuff that we'll get into in March, so that's that's about it. If anybody has any questions.
Thanks for the update.
Yep.
Upcoming meetings and subcommittee reports. Dedication of the new engine number two, February 19, our station. Town office, library, and health center will be closed on February 21st, President's Day. There's a planning board meeting on February 20. Town managers.
Looking over what I sent to you. I did send, thanks to Phil. I had sent a revised, what's that called? Revised? Pre-revised, which we'll get into further down, but I sent I, but I've given you all copies anyway. I've given you copies of the Lighthouse Restoration Committee meeting from February 8. And I just underlined things that I wanted to pay attention to, and that's why there's red lines there. Where it's fire truck, he's so excited. I know she's seen him, but he's just, you know, this truck is just.
They're really sending the town purchase to fire.
Did he say the oldest one or the newest one is 2000, 2004? Uh, yeah, and a lot, several other towns, North Haven has contacted him to, they're interested, some other town north for a couple of other smaller towns, you know, are interested in that size truck.
The smaller truck?
Yes, yeah, it's small, it's a pumper, it's called a mini pumper, and I guess they're becoming popular.
Yeah. I tell people, call their insurance companies and tell them, you have new fire truck.
Don't mention it to Mini. Um, oh, I have given you, we received yesterday the Volvo County tax, county tax bill, which does not get paid until, I pay it like November 30th, which is the end of the month. But it's gone up $38,651.32 last year. Um, I've handed you out in your packets, I believe, and the thing gave it forwarded to everybody at the Islesboro looking ahead. I've given you one of those. And just late this afternoon, the contract from Stephen Blatt came and I've given you all one of those. He, we were on a Zoom call with him Wednesday, just Wednesday, and he's very excited. If we go ahead with him, he's ready to come out and start meeting with the Health Center people and Fred and Mer, he'd like to do it the first week in March, start coming out. And I think that's questions.
Janet, do we need to do anything about a contractor, anything with Steve Blatt, or is that not been put together yet?
That's gonna come up on the new business.
Okay.
Where it says, discuss new Health Center draft proposal. I was anticipating it. He said he would send it, and he did just today, so.
Great, I don't have that agenda right in front of me, sorry.
Okay, did you get the contract, Lauren?
I did.
Okay.
Any questions for Janet?
Just can, the one that says revised to six, I'm assuming this one.
Throw that one away, because the newest revised one. Yes.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make.
Phil noticed when I changed so gently, the dates on the left-hand side, I hadn't changed up. Um, this one I just put in your packet this afternoon, but.
Anyway, I've got one now.
I knew everybody, I would, usually it's me, I don't give myself.
Alright, moving on, there's no correspondence, no old business, new business, set the budget schedule.
This is me asking if we can push it back a week, that was quite a bit. Just this.
These are all, so you're pushing it back a week?
We would've started the third, I think, the first one.
How come you wanna push it back a week?
I'm, I need more time.
Well, that as a baseline, it seems like it makes sense.
With that? I need time.
There's not gonna be any issue with running up against town meeting?
No, and that's something else we can talk about too. We haven't set a town meeting date. If we were pushing, again, we, this last few years, the town meeting has been so strange and so late, you know, it's I used to panic at being in June, but I'm not caring about that anymore. If something is coming up into the budget, we might decide, and I'm anticipating an open town meeting. I don't wanna do any more referendum meetings if we don't have to. That does really make a big difference in your scheduling, have to set the date to that, then work back and if we just get through the budget and then we decide you want it in May, if there's a reason you wanna have it in June, that's fine.
Get out of the way personally, although maybe we wanna wait till we've gotten through the budget, the set of date, or do we need?
Yeah, I mean, that's, we don't have a set, I mean, it's April 1st is always for town report information. Just because that's the date that Vern, I mean, we have to print out unpaid taxes, that's always, that's a law, state law, so we figure anything after April 1st, so. But people's reports come in, they do try to straggle them in, but and right now I'm sending out the budget worksheet, and I think I asked them to come back the middle of next week, and I've gotten three back, so, and I have a bunch of my own to do, so. It just takes time.
I do not have any objection about pushing it back a week. Does anybody have any thoughts, questions, concerns? Yes? You wanna make a motion to approve this schedule?
That would be nice.
So, moved by Phil.
I guess.
Any discussion? All in favor? Shay?
Hi.
Lauren?
Hi.
Phil, hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Also would I?
Okay, I'll give it to Tina too. She can send it out.
The schedule is set. Uh, next on the agenda is prioritizing the short-term and long-term projects for the town. Is it a list? Your, I'll just return your sea level rise, which includes two sort of geographic areas of the Narrows and Grendel Point, there's the Health Center, Public Safety renovation project, those are sort of at least up until now have been related, up-island firing garage, also part of that discussion. Roads, generally speaking, I know we had a pretty large discussion about this and dirt roads and and I'll, I'll add right now, I'll thank you about it, I appreciate you posting that, thanking you about that.
Oh, posting the roads? I had a big post-it up on my wall, I've looked at all, and then I said, post them February 1st, and I saw it on Valentine's Day. So I said, we gotta get those out.
Well, when my road was really ugly, I, I saw them, you posted that, so I appreciate that. I know we had the conversation last Yeah. It's good to be on top of that.
Do we know if it's being observed?
Well, I think mostly it's observed, it's just like the, the odds and ends of people delivering very heavy stuff. I think that's what happened last year.
Yeah, work.
Trailer truck.
Somebody working.
And really it was too much for the road at that time. Um, there's roads, safe roads, I'm not sure how we're differentiating roads and safe.
Well, um that would be Dave Petzel, you know, coming in to, and I haven't, I, I did receive a budget request from them, it was only $1,500, I did think, I just got that yesterday, they must've had a meeting. So, but these were just my thoughts, I mean, you all come up with probably, you had, you think of other things, I just look around my office and look at notebooks. These are the big things, and things that will affect the budget.
Or, or the Dark Harbor wastewater treatment facility, which, you know, is coming into some major renovations. The museum restoration at the lighthouse, lighthouse restoration. The Big Tree Swim Project, Matty Dodge Soccer Field. These are all things that have been part of the conversation really for quite a while now. I think for most of these have been, at least, so some of them we've dug into more recently, but mostly these have been on the radar of the select board for quite a few years now, and now it's, it's a good idea to try to set priorities in terms of what we wanna focus on and what we should prioritize. It looks like there's gonna be some very expensive things, you know, coming down the road, sea level rise and addressing that is gonna be expensive. Making any large changes to the Health Center, Public Safeties, perhaps building a new building up-island, down-island, changing, you know, renovating the facilities so they're, they're more user-friendly if we do that, it's that's, that's a pretty expensive thing. Roads, very expensive, depending on how my, how much we wanna tackle of the roads. There's a lot of dirt roads that need significant work, really before we think about things like paving or making them worse. That was something that came up last year too, Dark Harbor wastewater treatment. We have an estimate for that right now?
We don't yet. They're still working on that, Alver Associates are working on that survey. I thought it was gonna be a couple of months. I haven't heard anything from them lately, but they, they kind of come and go, and go down there and do stuff, but.
So then there's the museum restoration of the lighthouse. There's the swim project, which I have, I don't know where we stand on that now, but it may be close to being funded just privately at this point.
I'm thinking they have close to $35,000 that has come in.
How much should we put away last year? 15, or was it 25?
It might be 25.
Cut it down a little bit last year. So they have 35 and now 25, and a float was donated, which is gonna save.
Yeah. Um, and I know Earl's expecting another big donation, another, I think 20 in that room, so.
That was, I mean, that's probably not gonna get you all the way there. But it's close, so there's that possibility that we're that one, that one's funded. Matty Dodge Soccer Field. We don't have money still sitting in an account, do we, from that?
No, and, well, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of old money that we did transfer up, and I think there is.
I don't know, we had like $40,000.
That's right, that was like the, the, well, it wasn't the joint from the school, they didn't put in anything, I don't think. But there could be, but I know Zach Hanover took this on last fall, he was going to look at it.
He has some recommendations, so I think that's something like, we, I don't know, it's one of those that it, I don't know when it makes sense to bring it to the select board, I think, you know, there's the like there's the, how to improve it incrementally versus the like water, water project, you know, like big project. Right.
Major issue drainage, is that what the?
It's all clay, but I mean, other soils have been put in there over the years, but the base was clay, we've dug it all out, but it's just a bad location. I personally wish they could do it someplace else, start over. And then Tom Fowler came up with a plan, well, a few years ago, he to turn it the other direction, you know, so the sun's not in the kids' eyes, more what's the direction it's in now, east-west?
Yeah, east-west.
Uh, but then we didn't have enough land really to go toward Lucille's property.
I guess you want it then.
But please.
So to me, the Matty Dodge field, while it's like, it's at the bottom, but it, like, nobody, but it highlights to me kind of an issue that I, like, I'm like trying to have I just wanna, I feel like it's worth discussing, which is like we have all of these, even if we have grant funding for them to initiate the project. You know, it may not cost the town as much money upfront, but it's all infrastructure that's going to take a couple thousand dollars here, a couple thousand dollars there every year in order to maintain, along with you know, at some point, 10, 20 years down the road, probably a larger investment. You know, when something goes wrong, and I, I guess I just wanna, I feel like it's important to recognize that as we get into this and um, you know, think not just about this year, but kind of like what are those as, if we're building a new pier, what is the, you know, 15, 25 years, whatever, you know, down the road, when is the life of that float gonna be done, and we're, are gonna need to build a new float? Um, you know, all of those things, I think I'd like to have a discussion, kind of factor in, kind of that multi-year planning, because it's easy to say yes this year and, and end up having a pretty big snowball effect for the community down the road.
Yeah, and we're talking about this, this number of large projects, it seems like trying to plan the future of maintenance and ongoing operation costs for these things so that they don't all land on the same year, for example, and have to build a new float and do, you know, whatever other maintenance is required for all these things, seems like a worthwhile exercise right now before we're, you know, stuck with a balloon budget and uh, you know. A spike in.
The criticals of their wastewater situation.
Um, there's a lot of infiltration coming in through the system. And I think that's the main issue, we, we've worked at that over the years, doing section by section, but it still is coming in, and the whole system was built in 1902, perhaps?
Was it Craig who was here talking about, like, 90 or 95% of the water that goes through wastewater treatment is just runoff getting into the system? It's like.
Yeah, I don't know if it's that, but it's a big percentage of it.
I thought it was, it was like staggering, it was like easily the vast majority of the water treated there is just rainwater.
And that's being treated, the runoff water is being treated too?
It runs through the.
Of course it does, stupid question.
I remember years ago Marnie always felt like if that gets plugged up and all that water doesn't go, maybe the system wouldn't work so well, I mean, there was kind of, and I don't know if an engineer told her that, but it's one and a half dozen of one, you know. But, and we have done a lot of videoing up through and getting rid of roots and stems, but the, the pipes are all clay, you know, they're and broken, and people haven't put in their connectors properly over the years, and things have broken and
That's what needs to be taken apart and put together again.
Or I think they, they, they put like big balloons, sort of, balloons liners for the pipes inside, then they expand them?
There's different things they can do, on different sized pipes, yeah.
Those, we don't really have all the information we need right now, I mean, there's, it's easy to say that some things are really important for me to do that, but it's it's hard not to prioritize things that don't. It's hard not to prioritize things that don't need a lot um and could just get done right now.
Well, and to me like, so sorry, going back to like the Matty Dodge, I feel like it's, it's the thing that they like, is easy to be, it's the last priority. But. Uh, it also is.
Most doable?
Well, if I don't know how to, I think, yeah. Right, but it's, but it, and it's been deferred maintenance, really. It's been a problem for twenty five years. And so if um, yeah, it. Um, is a symptom of kind of what I'm fearing could be a broader problem as we create more infrastructure that needs to be maintained. Is I want to make sure that we really um, take care of what we have.
Yeah. I agree fully with Shay. I'm sorry. But no, I think that's a really good point, that if you, especially if we can get the projects and stuff done here that aren't going to have the big balloon. You know, Matty Dodge might, but looking at it with an overview, it wouldn't. And so prioritizing that one a little bit higher, knowing that we can almost just mark something off the list. Would be good.
Well, maybe, maybe one thing is, is there anything anybody wants to add to this list for? You know, top concerns for the town. I mean, I I made a little list and everything that I thought is on this list already. Um, I don't know if there's any other projects out there that we want to add to the list. Paige, please.
One thing I'm wondering about down the road, I think sometime you're gonna want to think something about a garage for the broadband stuff. Uh, part of the issue is that the truck's a used truck and it, you know, it's rusty more heavily sitting outdoors. So that of course means more frequent buying trucks. And, you know, it's, I can see the challenge. You're talking about all these buildings and maintaining an old rest, but you're gonna want to try to figure the balance for that. Right, right now, the issue is some of the stuff is upstairs and some of the stuff is in my house, some is my van, some's in the truck, so. You know, easy enough when I'm figuring out where to go get it, but if someone's coming and filling in behind me all of a sudden. Where are things? It'd be a lot better to have one building, but food for thought for the future.
Gabe, um, I apologize. Janet mentioned that uh, maybe I I wasn't able to hear you. And I'm now realizing that's true. I can hear most of what. Uh, everybody else says, but Gabe is a little quiet and so is Phil. Is it possible to turn your volumes up a little bit or? Or move that speaker slightly?
I'll turn my volume up, Lauren.
We got a solid foot, we can move you closer. Thank you very much. Sorry about the. That's terrific. Thank you. And I hadn't thought about um, uh, all of these projects. Uh, that, yes, we need to think about whether we're creating more infrastructure problems um, or not. Um, and and so many of the projects seems to be, seem to be old projects that have been. Waiting to be dealt with for some time. Maybe we need to. Have a moratorium on introducing new new projects until some of the old ones are addressed and um, and make that a part of. Shay's request that we do some budget planning around this so that, you know, yes. Every year we would like this new, new shiny thing, but maybe we need to wait and cycle in new projects. Now, I say that at the same time, I'm one of the people wanting a project to be addressed. So um, I realize that, that there's. There's sadness in in attempting to do that, but maybe that's what we need to do.
So I think is maybe where making the priority list comes in, in trying to have things that we're addressing. There's also a possibility of trying to address. A lot of expensive things all at once wholesale with a bond and not try to do taxes, right? And not try to make it a one-year hit or. Raise money, including capital reserve accounts, and then pay for something when you have that money set aside and just say. We're gonna do this stuff now, we, and take out a bond and pay for it and then pay that back. And have that be sort of the the financing mechanism. That doesn't resolve the issue that Shay's talked about in terms of future. Maintenance and upkeep on these things, because I'm sure some of these are gonna have. You know, the maintenance and upkeep is is long lasting and and well into the future and trying to think about. How to schedule those things in a way that's beneficial for the towns. Is a good idea for sure. I don't know how, does anybody have any thoughts or or ideas about how we want to try to pri- prioritize these things? I mean, there's different ways to look at it. Um, there's, there's. So some have more. Um, they're more time sensitive than others. Some cost more than others. Some. Um, affect more town residents than others. I mean, there's just metrics that you could think about. And it's hard to know where we should be.
No, I think about that, like the Dark Harbor wastewater, that could be very expensive to replace, you know, to thirty five, thirty seven. Um, homeowners, um, but there may be a grant that he, this gentleman, Bill Oliver, will look into and see if there's grants available for us.
Well, it might be grants for a lot of these things too, which is something we're gonna need to.
Yeah, and that's what he, that would be his job to apply and go ahead and try to find this. If you decided you want to go ahead with that.
And I know this is something that's come up at the county level, but it might be worth, if we think we're gonna start tackling some very big projects. On the near side, which it looks like we're going to have to, we might want to look at hiring a grant writer or somebody who can. Seek out these opportunities and deal with some of the legwork so that, I mean, I, I think it's a lot of time and energy. They're gonna need to to lean on the town. And town manager and other town employees to get information to work on these things, but if they could be the driving force to try to put applications together. It probably would go a long way to getting some additional money and perhaps pay for itself.
You met Adam Bakker yet?
I I know who he is, kinda. I don't, I don't know him well.
I'm gonna get you in here to meet him, but I told him, he's like our angel. No one ever came to us before and said, I'm a grant specialist, and I was like. And he's working on things right now for the health center. It's phase four and.
I suspect we might want some, someone who we pay, who's on our payroll to do this.
Starting his own business. I've tried to pay. He is starting.
As a consultant?
Yep.
But I mean, he could probably perhaps line us up with someone else. I mean, I don't know. They're here for this winter. I don't know if they're here for.
Well, if he's any good, why wouldn't we contract with him if he had his own business?
Well, when he, if, if and when he does, you know, he is working right now and he's doing help, helping us all the time.
I was gonna say, some of these items may not have the choice of picking when they have to get done.
That's true. It's, the goal is that we tackle them before we get to that point, I think. Yes.
I mean, it seems like for all of these, really where we're at the point is, um, you know. Perhaps a little bit further along with the big tree swim project, but everything else is really figuring out what the big number is going to be. Maybe that's okay, and it's just a matter of. How do we align when we know all of those big numbers to, um. You know, to figure out what the, what the funding mechanism is, because I do think, you know, obviously putting just large placeholders in isn't gonna get it done responsibly. But like you said, bonding or um. Private fundraising is um. I think are real possibilities for a lot of these projects.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I I know that there are ongoing discussions about sea level rise, about the health center building that Lauren's working on. It seems like as part of those discussions and as we're developing. Solutions to the various problems that we see other for the health center for sea level rise. If we could. Get, depending on what we, what the the solution is, sort of a maintenance schedule on those things as part of that. You know, like what are, what are we putting in for a building and what is it going to need, you know, down the road? And if we could, if we could build that into our own planning, that would go a long way to, we have the cost upfront and then we could start. On a calendar, these are the projected big years for expenses and try to um. Make the projects not line up altogether at least. And that's maybe not as sophisticated a way of, I'm sure someone somewhere could really design this to be that way, but that's. It's, it's hard to think about. It's just, there's a lot of variables.
I know when they built the school, there was, you know, they kind of did hand over the like, okay, in fifteen years, you're gonna need to replace the boiler. You're gonna need to replace the roof and, um, you know, I think something similar is, yeah, just. For every pier, every twenty years, you're gonna need a new float. How would, how was the scope flows? Schedule been looked at, I, um, and.
All the other town floats too.
Right, exactly. Right.
Yeah, the other town.
Yep.
So I don't know if we prioritize anything. I mean, I think a lot of these are.
Well, it's a good start. I mean, just to see them, I mean, I've had these in my mind, you know, like I have to get this out of my head and just. See, and there may be like he said, maybe other ones other than, I know Paige is like a garage.
Well, and I think also asking, um, you know, asking other committees. As they're going through, I mean, there's the short-term need for this budget, but like, really going to committees and saying. We want to start putting together a longer-term projections and um, asking them to do some research about. Have the long-term maintenance costs.
Probably the museum is probably the biggest one right now, that they are looking to do, what they would like to do for the lighthouse down there.
So, right now, the museum, we have approved conditionally money to be spent on. Creating a plan for rehabilitation of the facility.
Dave Petzel's on there if he wants to say anything, but that's basically it, yeah.
So that, so that's in the works. The big tree swim project, I think permitting is in the works right now. Is that right?
Everything?
I think permitting is in the works for that.
They pretty much had their. Limits.
If, oh, there's a few that they need, but they, if they're all done now, maybe that's.
I think that's pretty much.
Matty Dodge soccer field, that's with, with Zach. To have, it'd be nice to have, maybe we should seek him out and try to have this as part of the discussion. For the budget, we can think about.
Yeah, I've not touched base, so I don't think I've laid eyes on him.
I'm happy to have him come. If, if you wanted, it's one of those things, because it, I know there is like a crossover with the school. If you think it's. Good to have a discussion here, you know, maybe we could invite Tracy or um. Don, is it Don?
Don.
Don, um. Just to have, you know, the school um, perspective there um, too. I'm sure he's always happy to talk.
I think that's a great idea. Um, and again, it's, it's sort of weird that there's crossover with the school, but it's a facility that's used by the town. And I know we've had this conversation before and sometimes there are disagreements about whether things ought to be on one budget or another, but.
Yeah, I don't care.
I don't care.
I'm happy to have the sound.
Fine with me to have it on the town.
Yeah.
So, let's, maybe we should pick a day right now, or it almost. The seventeen seems like it might make the most sense with recreation. But if that's a bad day for Zach, I don't think there's any reason you can't take it up pretty much any other budget meeting.
Maybe ask him if seventeen would work for him?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So sea level rise is also ongoing in terms of what the solutions are and what the costs are gonna be, and that's um. That's something that hopefully will, it's gonna be an ongoing large project that even come to that point, so.
Right, I feel like for the next really two years, probably, we're looking at planning and we're gonna be grant funding for planning and then we're gonna, those plans are gonna lead to. Big number at the end, and then we'll can deal with the big number.
So we're a few years out on spending the big money, which doesn't necessarily mean that. We don't want to put money aside right now, because we, we know the money, we know that's gonna be a, a big number at the end. Um, the health center, um, public safety renovation project, up island fire garage. That is part of uh, an effort that Lauren's spearheading right now. Um, so we should have some proposal and cost idea, and we do have this contract with Steve Blatt right now. Uh, in front of us, and so that's something that is, um. We will at some point have a proposal and a, and a budget for. So, dark harbor wastewater treatment museum, all of these things with the exception of the roads. Are going to have a definitive um. Proposal and expense tied to them at some point. There's a process underway to look at this for the future. So I don't know how we handle the roads. There's a lot of dirt roads on the ground, which is primarily what we were talking about before. Um, I mean. There's, there's issues of of drainage around. I mean, I know sort of at the end of my road is like combed off now, ice and. Not great.
Several. Drive down Church Turn Road, it's very end, although now it's, I'm with the temperatures, it's, the road's muddy now, because. Ruts were this deep and I tried to drive through it.
So.
I'm looking at this year possibly not paving, but uh, grading and ditching. Have a year of that serious ditching to get things cleaned out.
We had somebody from the state come out and and survey those roads, right?
I have that, and then I've just received from them the stick with the program on it, the road safety manager or. Road management, but there's some kind of glitch with the. Well, it was, he was a road ranger. Yeah, uh, brown, it's all brown. Um, so he, he's done the survey, but to get the program together, um, I need. And they're working on it, the lady at the DOT or something, she's. And Paige, you might be involved, although I gotta do that quick before you leave. Did you get an email that I forwarded to you from Harry Guest?
Yeah, we can try that tonight before I leave.
Okay, so it has to be unloaded and then.
Install correctly.
So did the state give us a plan for what to do on each of these roads?
Well, it will tell us, it'll show what the condition of each road, you know, and I think there's recommendations in there. About the dirt roads, and he, and he basically, I could. I don't know if I gave you a copy of that report, but he basically felt like our roads were in good condition compared to some other roads, but. It's the same thing with ditching, uh, cutting back, the. Of course, building the road to the proper bed, you know, road and bed. Yeah, with a crown, yeah. And the pavement roads, they, you know, most of these roads were never built properly. The big trucks going up and down the road and.
Right, so I mean, I guess do we have like a mileage of roads that are kind of in, within that kind of. Need to be rebuilt category versus. You know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of imagining like a red, yellow, green system, do it, and the number of miles of road kind of currently in each category.
I mean, he can say that our roads are good compared to other towns, but like when you drive down East Shore Drive when it's really awful, uh, it doesn't make you feel. Regardless of what's going on anywhere else.
Yeah, no, I'm anxious to see this work, this and see what it does. Because then you enter in what you've done to the roads and then you, you know, you will see what you, what needs to be done. But I haven't gotten that far yet because of. The programs and hopefully Paige can.
Look at it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good to have some idea, so we can plan for that too. But it sounds like we will have. I mean, all these things are actively being thought about and we'll have these numbers sooner. I think if we. Are actively asking the question about um, planning for future expenses and future maintenance. I know that was something that we built into the conversation with the broadband initiative. That was part of, that was part of the conversation about what it costs down. It's part of the conversation for the solar arrays on the roof. How often you have to replace things like inverters and that. So it's good to have that conversation on the front end and see if we can't. Line things up as, as best we can for the future. And of course, nothing's perfect and things fail and. But we can do what we can to try to alleviate that. Other thoughts on short-term, long-term projects? We wanna. Really have any thoughts on this or how we want to proceed or where we are right now?
I wonder if we could add it into the up island fire garage. If you're building a bay, could you build?
Let's kick that to Lauren. Hey, Lauren, do you want to have that as part of your conversation?
With. Uh, would you repeat what the conversation would be?
Um, the conversation about Paige has brought up the, the potential need for a broadband garage to house the broadband building. And it sounds like also to, to uh, serve as some sort of storage for materials that are needed for. Tools and tools, yeah. So it's.
I think, I think a discussion could be brought, that could be brought into the discussion. I'm also thinking that. If we did uh, get funding, approve, building the health center, uh, the new health center and we had to. Um, redesign and uh, the vacated building, there might be space in there. Uh, the new health center and we had to um redesign and uh the vacated building, there might be space in there as well. Uh, not for the truck, but for um for the supplies.
Yeah, it's good to have that on your radar, though, as we're thinking about these things, I mean, if we're end up building, let's say, an up island fire station, it's. Almost certainly going to be cheaper to add one bay than it is to build a standalone building at some point in the future.
Yep, that sounds great, definitely.
Uh, there have been discussions about an ambulance being up there too, is that still going on?
Yeah, when ambulance come fire.
If some of the equipment here goes up there, then there might be room here for it, so there's, there's room to explore a lot of options with it.
So hopefully, if we, if we end up with a contract with Steve Blatt, you you'll be part of that conversation, I hope Paige to have. Have uh your thoughts shared with him, so we can. Incorporate everything.
Yeah, that's great, Gabe, I'll definitely do that, we can bring Paige in at the right time and. And uh make sure it's on Steve's list.
Great, thanks Lauren.
Maggie had a comment. Or if a fire cup was moved out of the current garage. Yep, Alan brush, pretty much what you said. There might be space in the current building.
There's lots of possibilities, especially if we're redesigning and building a new facility, the possibilities are. Um, okay, so I think we've had a good conversation about that, it's nice to just. Talked about it a little bit and have an idea about where we stand, and again, we haven't really set priorities, a lot of these things are. High on the priority list of needing to be done, um, some have been high on the priority list for quite a while. So. Uh, yeah, let's continue the conversation on this, I guess, as we get more numbers. Um, and some of these things are going to be trickling in, some are going to be on the sooner side and some are going to be on the later side, so. Um, we'll have to just continue to update the priority list and plan uh as we get more information. But you have any other thoughts, questions? The years before we move on. Right now. Moving on, discuss the new health center draft proposal from Stephen Black Architects. Um, I think. I was gonna say, this just got emailed to me today, maybe, so I haven't, I haven't taken a look at it, although. Steve Glad is somebody who's known to the island and the town, as I've had worked with the town for a while. Um, on, on several projects, um, and so with that, I understand that he is confident about working on or. The design for a rural health facility, which is sort of where we ran into trouble with the other architectural firm. Yeah, so I think um. I haven't, well, I haven't read through this. I'm, I'm happy that he's a person who is um. Throwing his hat into the, his name into the hat for a possibility of working with the town on this project, because I think he would do a good job, and so. See what it is, is this not to exceed twenty five thousand plus five thousand in expenses, what we're looking at with two architects, was that fifty?
Around the same. Not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Oh, five hundred.
That's the concept, cost.
It's around the same or is it?
I can go get.
About like if we have money in the budget.
I believe it was twenty five and then there was a contingency in um two A's of five hundred, I think that's right, isn't it Janet? And then, uh, so the contingency is higher with Steve's, unless I'm missing something.
So I, you're, I misspoke, it's only a five hundred dollar. Expense contingency for Steve Platt, so.
And that's exactly the same, I don't have it in front of me, I, I don't have a, a access to my documents, so.
Have you, did you talk with uh with Steve Blatt, Lauren?
Yes, we had a meeting, Janet. Um, uh Pete Anderson, Dave Sessions and myself had a meeting with him, and then we had an open meeting uh with. Members of the Health and Safety Bu- Building Committee and members of select board that wanted to attend as well as the ad hoc members, so it was a really. Really good meeting, we only had one member of the board or of the committee that was missing, and that was Jay Slakowski and. Um, I don't know how much you want me to say, but he, I think he did a absolutely brilliant job, he obviously has the experience and knowledge. Um, in not only commercial construction, but also specifically in health center construction.
So, I know you're spearheading this project, or would your recommendation be to. Uh, approve this contract with Steve Blatt?
Absolutely and enthusiastically, yes.
So I'm looking here at the, the contract with two A architects, schematic design phase twenty three thousand preliminary cost estimating. Twenty five hundred, so the total contract was twenty five five, which is identical to the total contract of Steve Blatt, so it looks like it's not going to be a budgetary concern.
Since we haven't spent any money.
We haven't spent any money. Yes, please.
Um, did we, uh, I don't remember how we. Got aligned with the two A architects to begin with, was that a bid process or? Um, I was wondering, I feel very confident, um, Stephen Blood, I think has done a lot of really good work with the community, so. Um, I think we would be lucky to work with him here, I'm just wondering, having, you know, about to enter two contracts. Um, of a size that we typically would put out to bid. I'm just kind of raising it as a question.
Well, I think when we, we approved the two A architect bid, that was part of the discussion, right, and we decided that, uh, I don't have that. The policy in front of me, but there are reasons that you came in. Uh, approve a contract, that's more, is it, is the five thousand dollar the cutoff?
Or it might have been ten.
Uh, and it's, and one of them, I think, is professional services, uh, if you want to hire a particular professional. Which is what we did, and perhaps that wasn't a good thing, seeing as how that ended up first time around.
Yeah, I had spoken with, I had asked around and I got her name through Dave Kenny. And Lincolnville, they had done the Lincolnville. Town office renovation and Vern knew her from there and something she'd done in Hope to another office, so. That's kind of what we. We went with.
Well, and can I add that I believe that Steve was our first choice, but he wasn't available at the time, he was. He was, uh, and he has freely told, talked about this, he was ill. Um, and he's since recovered, he had Lyme disease, so he was our first choice.
Because I remember we were talking about it before, we'd put it. The feelers out and two A was the only one that had even came back with any kind of response.
Fantastic, I don't have any reservations at all about entering, I just.
Having to. No, after you said it, it was, yeah, why did we, and I, I think that was more of it, was that they were the only ones that were. Even interested in talking with us, and it was, well, if there's nobody else that wants to do it. Because we'd asked a couple of.
And they were busy, but they would, they were prone to take it on.
Would you like a motion to approve this contract?
And I think we, we probably ought to make clear, do we have that, is it a town policy that dictates the, what's. To bid, it's not a state statute, is it?
No, no, it's purchasing policy that the town.
Just want to make sure that we um highlight the reason that we are not putting this out to bid despite being over the. The limit in the town policy.
Yeah, and I think it was, was it legal, I mean, I. But I think, yeah, it's professional services was one of those that you.
Yeah, we certainly can do it, I just think when you make the motion, we ought to have the rationale for not.
I think I have, I think I'm in your desk. I'm not exactly sure which one. But there's lots of them.
I've got mints on. Is this, would this be under ordinances?
No, it's a policy. Selectman's policy.
Well, she opened up her desk and I thought, well, why would it, what's in mine?
Okay, so I'll just read what the town policy is, the, the board of selectmen may waive the requirements for competitive bidding for the purchase of ten thousand dollars or more in the case of a non emergency purchase. When the purchase is inappropriate for competitive bidding due to the nature of the item, time constraints or other factors.
I think that with time constraint we were talking about before.
Yeah, the other factor that I would highlight here is that this is a professional services contract and that. One architect is not the same as the other, I think it's shown sort of by the failed initial contract. So I, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract. I feel second by Shay. Any discussion about this? Uh, all in favor Shay? Lauren? The contract is approved, and this is something that Janet, you're just signing, right?
Yes, and I will let him know, so he can, and Lauren, you know, has been excited to. Credit the news far and wide, now you can do that.
All right, there is no other business. Um, unless anybody has any other business. During none. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve warrant number seventeen. By Shay. Second by Melissa, is there any discussion? None, all in favor Shay? Warrant number seventeen is approved. There are no appointments on the schedule for today.
Should I ask you a question about the draft?
Yes, I'm sorry, we're going looking at. Oh, also looking ahead, yeah. Yeah, we can, yeah, that's.
Well, no, I, all I wanted to know is, is this the draft that you proposed?
You said you were gonna take it and make some. I made some very minor changes to that draft from last year. So it was, it was more put out to the rest of the selectmen to see what if any. Thoughts additions that the selectmen, but there, I've gone through it and read through it. And made changes to things that I didn't think were applicable for this year that were applicable to last year. I did leave in a reference to handling of uh the COVID nineteen pandemic, I think at the time last year, we expected that the. That was sort of on its way out, and here, here we are still. So, that's still in there, I didn't take that part of it.
I have it on the agenda for the March third, unless you think that's too soon.
Not too soon. I have no appointments, share comments. I don't have any comments. I share a comment, shit. Lauren, comments from uh, from Dallas, the country.
No comments, it's beautiful here, how are you guys doing, that's my only question.
We're all right. Um, Melissa, comments?
Lauren, when do you come back?
Um, I believe it'll be right around March twenty second.
Bring me back something cool.
You got it.
Phil gets the last word.
Uh, thank you, I have nothing to say, actually.
Phil can say something again in just a second, I'm so sorry. Basketball tournaments, varsity boys are going to play in Augusta. Monday, the nineteenth at noon versus Pine Tree, it's the first of the three playoff games. When we win against Pine Tree, we'll play again on Wednesday at eleven thirty against Valley. And then I will let you know further from there, all of it's posted to school's website, Facebook pages and the different things that I can think of, but yay, boys. I made it to playoffs. And now Phil can have the last word.
Phil gets the last word still. No comment, entertain a motion to adjourn, so moved.